Good morning, welcome to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting for February 18th, 2020. Mr. Gurley cannot be with us today. At this time, we have the invocation by Commissioner Bell and then the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Wayne A. Cut. Mr. Bell.
Okay, Commissioners, I have the great honor of introducing our guest minister here today, Dr. Glenn Phillips of the Past of First Baptist Church.
First Baptist Church.
First Baptist Church. First Baptist Church, I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah. In true Baptist fashion, I'll say something about that in a minute. I pray in true Baptist fashion. I would like to say a word, I know many of you Commissioners have had me in here before when I was not in the happiest of moods, but I'm in a happy mood today because I want to say thank you. First of all, I want to thank everyone of you for your support of Night to Shine. If you remember, a few weeks ago, one of my church members came in and we had the Tim Tebow based prom night for special needs population in our community. And your support was essential to it, and I thank you for that because without saying anymore, it was an unbelievable success. It brought people in our community from all walks of life, from every corner of Wayne County, of different places and races and cultures, all together to celebrate a really important part of our community, our special needs friends. I thank you for that, I thank you for your support in that. I also wanted to take a moment because I know they get, we know about the Maxwell Center, but I was one that did not know really about the Maxwell Center until this year. We were unable to house the numbers at First Baptist and we didn't really want to because we wanted it to be a community thing. And I want you to know Commissioners what a diamond we have in the Maxwell Center. James Wade, Christina Williams, Camille Gaden, they could not have been any more professional, any more, have any more, they had all the answers, is what I'm saying. And we have an unbelievable facility in our community that we should just really celebrate and continue to promote and we're hoping to be back there next year. They're in such demand, we don't know if the date's going to work out, but, and Tebow makes us use the date, he says. But I wanted to say to y'all today, what a wonderful thing the Maxwell Center is and James Wade, they made it seamless and wonderful and it was a great night. I didn't know she was going to be here today, but I also wanted to commend Kate Daniels from Wayne Chamber, she was our mistress of ceremonies, I guess is the word to say. And in her usual buoyant and wonderful way, she made the night awesome and I appreciate her in us. Finally, I want to say a word about Wayne County EMS and Wayne County deputies. The foundation made us have folks on site and each one of them came and unbelievable the way those two departments welcomed us in. And on that night, two of the EMS were so moved as I went to pay them for the night. They said the department had gathered the week before and decided that this was one thing they weren't going to charge for. And they did not, they would not take their money. And so that's the kind of people we have in Wayne County and I appreciate your support of Night to Shine. So enough of that, my prayer is very brief, okay? But in pure Baptist fashion, I'd like to offer a prayer for people of all faiths and people of no faith today. So will you pray with me? God in heaven, Creator of the world and everyone who lives in it, I thank you today for another day of life, another day to cherish all relationships, especially our relationship with you. May our Thanksgiving for another day to just breathe and live overflow into a day and a life filled with joyful Thanksgiving, that we might even in difficult moments, treat others as we wish to be treated, with kindness and understanding, compassion and mercy, and with the awareness that everyone, all people we meet are created in your image. Grant wisdom, grant us that desire to see each other as you see us, as your beloved, and help us to work in our community, that your kingdom may come on earth as it is in heaven. Amen.
Amen. Mr. A. Cut.
Before we say the pledge, just remember why we say the pledge, this flag, remember to many women that have sacrificed so much for us to have the freedom that we have in America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, just for information purposes, if Commissioner Mayo be awfully nice today, that was his pastor.
Yeah, and I was going to mention to him before he left, he can come up and speak to us every two weeks if he likes. We can use a lot more of that. This time we have the approval of the minutes from our February 4th meeting.
I'm so moved, we approve it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand please. Motion carries. Discussion of the, an adjustment of our agenda, Mr. Hunicutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, would like to do two walk-ons and this was discussed in our pre-agenda meeting and workshop, budget amendment number 342 for social services and budget amendment number 344 for cooperative extension.
Okay, is that all your changes today?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay, all in favor of the agenda, raise your right hand please. Okay, motion carries. Mr. Hunicutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, under special presentation, we have an update on Open Broadband Project by Kent Winrich.
So if Kent carries. Good morning. And I do have kind of a PowerPoint to go with this as well. So I'm here, my name is Kent Winrich, I'm Chief Technology Officer and co-founder of Open Broadband. And I'm here to give you a quick update. Hopefully, there it is. I wanted to do a little bit of graphic work so you can see what's what we're doing with. So Open Broadband, we're North Carolina owned and operated, as you know, and you've given us some funding to be able to get some, get some things going. So I just want to go through a little bit of what our model is, just kind of remind you what we're, what we're doing. Our subscription service starts at about $39 a month. We have speeds from 25 meg up to a gigabit. We do line of sight and non-line of sight new technology. We do fiber, copper, and we'll use string and dixie cups, whatever it takes to get the broadband to be a vehicle. We work with governments, business, education, residential, we do Wi-Fi zones and analytics. We're NC owned and operated, which means even our call centers here is up in Wilson as a matter of fact. So the money stays either locally or at least reach, or at least statewide. We've employed two full-time people in the county and we've got about three or four part-time people as well. So your money stays in the community or at least in the state. Our accomplishments, we've already activated over 250 broadband customers, about 175, 73 around Mount Olive, 63 around Seven Springs, remainder around Goldsboro and Fremont. We've only just begun in Goldsboro and in Fremont. And we've got a lot of areas to cover, to expand into. We've done Wi-Fi zones free to the public in Mount Olive, in Little Old Seven Springs, and at the Bryan Sports Complex as well. Mount Olive, this is an example of one of the water towers that we use in conjunction with the utilities and the antennas that we have at the top of that one water tower itself. So we've got quite a bit of investment going into this, we've taken your dollars to kind of give us a kickstart, but we've also invested a lot of our own money into this as well. And it's been, it's becoming a very successful situation. So we're doing rural business in Goldsboro, up in the upper left-hand corners, Biofuels up in Fremont, we're still working with them at getting internet to their generation plant. In the middle is the soccer park. To the right is Carolina Nut, which is a company that is near Mount Olive, which before was just using little Verizon hotspots to run their business on, which is, you can't do that. That just doesn't work. So we put antennas on one of their grain elevators and not only did we provide service to them, but they, we provide service to the neighbors as well. And then down in the lower left-hand corner is on top of the West Walnut Street building where we have, we're just beginning to provide service to some of the people down there, but we're also offering now gigabit service for people that, or companies that need, would like gigabit, we have gigabit service available to some of the downtown areas of Goldsboro. Noted customers, University of Mount Olive has been a great partner with us. They opened up a brand-new agricultural center, put up a tower that allowed us to provide them with service and then also provide neighbors with service as well. Also, they opened up a flight school at the airport in Mount Olive and we're providing service to them as well. Carolina Nut, we mentioned that before. Then North Carolina Forest Service here in Goldsboro, we're doing all the Mount Olive town buildings, including fire and police, several churches, the town of Several Springs, I mentioned Biofuels, we're still in progress, and the Mount Olive Airport EMS helicopter, which actually gives them the ability to stay there and actually get their work done. These, this is a graphic of all new customers in the Mount Olive area. We've got some areas up to the north and east and down to the south that we're trying to fill in a little bit more. This is the Seven Springs area, these are people that had absolutely, had very little and as you may well know, cell phones a little difficult in that area as well. We have some areas over the Cliffs of Deuce, which is difficult for us to get to, but we're working on new towers into that area as well. All these red spots are towers that we have and except there's one in Goldsboro which is missing. And I added this one in Grantham, which we're in discussions with the county right now at getting approval to get on, get on that tower. So we're just waiting for all the proper legal procedures to go through and make that happen. We're really anxious to get on that because the people in Grantham contact me every day. And we're trying to get there. But you can see all the other towers that we've got, that we've gone up. I got to tell you, just a little side note, that it's been, it's a real pleasure working with people of Wayne County. They're just, everybody, it's a community that we have seen, that people work together to help each other out. And it's just, it's just really nice to work with people that, that help their neighbor out to try to get everybody get on, get on the broadband service. So this is, we're on the West Walnut Street, but this green area is where we can provide, in some of the red area, we can provide gigabit service to people who may need it, it's actually up and running right now. We don't have anybody on it, but it's available if, if needed. It's kind of nice to be able to have that if you do, if you decide to ever do like a tech center or, or if there's a business that really needs it, we just kind of, we turned it up recently and we'll start letting people know more about it. But it's nice to be able to have gigabit service into areas that may need it. So our pilot program, we believe was a great success. The money invested is really, it's started to cover a lot of people. We've also invested a lot of our own money as well and a lot of sweat equity. Now let's continue on with that. So the North Carolina, state of North Carolina has something called a Great Grant, which this year Wayne County is eligible. There's no cost to the county. Open Broadband will apply for it and what, we can get like a million dollars to help expand broadband. Now, Open Broadband needs to have matching funds to go with that, so we have to raise some money as well. To be able to get this grant though, we're looking to partner even tighter with the county because we get extra points in how we apply for our application. And partnering will be things such as working with, you know, getting on the water towers, getting on the radio towers, just, you know, your support, you know, just a written support letter would be fantastic. So like we said, we need to expand onto more radio and water towers, we could get a million dollars with a grant and then we'll match 50% to 100% as well, so it could be $2 million of funding that could come into Wayne County to expand into more counties, more areas of Wayne County. In addition, Open Broadband would also like to be in competition for any county internet services that are needed. It's just something on a side note. But this Great Grant we're applying for in March, this last year we won a million and a half dollars for Caswell County and we won half a million dollars for Grants County. And of course, we have to match that as well. So we're applying for Wayne County, Duplin County, and Green County, which could be all cooperative in that, and how it all comes together. So in other words, we get grant money for Green County that could help some of the edge of Wayne County, likewise with Duplin. So we'll be applying for that Great Grant in March and we'll keep you all up to date on what's happening in regards to that. We want to thank you all for being supportive of what we're doing here and bringing broadband service to the county and I am more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I got one.
Mr. Page?
Let's just say I'm very glad we're moving, moving on with this. My interest really, and I was one to ask for that date because we still have challenges apparently in the northern end of the county.
Yep.
And we want to help you with that because those are my people.
Got you.
And he is, and he is, and all of us, well, you know, but they're really, are out of the loop out there. And I just wonder what we can do as a board to help it, make it happen, to cover the entire county.
Well, the, even a simple letter of support for the Great Grant will be a big help.
Does the grant look good or are we, are we too high in the tier one?
It looks, it looks real good.
Okay.
Looks real good. And if we actually do that with these other counties, the state will see that as a benefit to like a region as well. So I think that it's looking real good for the application and we've been successful in other applications as well, so we know how to win them. But the support of the county is, is what we'll be looking for. Okay, Mr. Doherty.
I think what my fellow Commissioner was saying, we'd be glad to give you that letter if this is all concentrated in the northern end of the county.
He's going to cover Seven Springs for us, I can tell you about that.
That said, Mr. Chairman, I really do think that we need to issue this letter of support and ask that you definitely put that grant in, that grant application and hopefully we can expand it in our northern end of the county. Absolutely, absolutely. The, the reason we're kind of down to the south, that we were looking at Seven Springs as being kind of like our pilot. And the reason we did that is that that's probably one of the more difficult areas for us to get to. So okay, we knocked out the most difficult area to get to, now we can start, we've got the Fremont as a start, we've only got a couple of customers up there, but we just have just begun getting to that, now we need to expand into those other areas. I definitely hear you, completely agree that we need to concentrate more in the north as we go forward, absolutely, no argument.
I'm glad to hear that, aren't you, Mr. Page? Mr. Page, who's next?
Well, I don't know, but let me just say since we're talking about where you got started and some of the more important things, I do remember quite vividly, my colleague, Mr. Page, was advocating very strongly for Seven Springs because it was just out there and no communication, but by the same token, I can be very proud that you've enhanced that which can happen around Mount Olive. And the fact that you're using our water tower down there took to great advantage. And you mentioned the grain bin, is that the one that's between Mount Olive and Calypso? Is that the big grain? That's not what you're talking about?
No, that's not, this is, it's a smaller one, just to the east off of 55, north of 55. It used to be a cotton gin if I remember right.
All right, and you just said that, that place just locked on, on my head, but it, it gives a great enlightenment to all parts of our county to be able to use that kind of technology, all young people, especially children, students, be able to use their electronics, all that kind of data to enhance their education. So thank you very much. And yes, I know you want to go north and do everything there, but thank for what you've already done. Thank you for what you've already done.
It's, it's been just a pleasure, yes.
I'm concerned about the whole county.
Right.
But I live in the northwest corner of Wayne County.
Right.
And it would be a pleasure for me to start sending my check to you instead of who I'm sending it to now.
You'd like to accept that. Yes, sir.
Fremont and the northern part of county, is that basically, you still have parts of the southern part of county or is most of our need up in the northern part at this time?
We have much more need in the northern part, we have some areas to fill in in the southern part.
Right.
That's fill-in, so it's not core infrastructure. So we need to put some core infrastructure in in the northern part.
Right.
So then, yeah, obviously we need to take care of it.
Well, one of, one of my questions is, is that if we stay on schedule with the school board, we're going to build a new school in Fremont.
Oh.
Okay?
Okay.
So that, that would probably help the situation also, as far as the justification, right?
Yes.
So if we get it in, if we can go ahead and get broadband in, from all, for everything that's being said and promised, there is going to be a school there.
Okay.
So I'm just bringing that up because I said my district, okay?
Yeah.
Any other comments from the board? Okay.
Again, thank you all for your support and we look forward to expanding.
Just follow up with Commissioner Doherty, said that maybe not have a motion of support and a letter to be sent on, signed on behalf of the Chairman to Open Broadband in support of the NC Great Grant.
We need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we have a motion on the floor? I'm sorry. All in favor, raise your right hand please. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You got it.
All right. We'll get that to you the next day or two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With no conditions.
Thank you. Next is an update on the 2020 census by Planning Director Barry Gray.
All right, good morning. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you about this important subject and if you did not realize we were in census season, you will very shortly, because in the next several weeks, you will be receiving information in the mail, all residents in Wayne County will be receiving information in the mail. And if you don't respond to that information, you will be receiving a visit likely. So you will be hearing more about it as the weeks pass by. I did want to start by mentioning that the county has been working with a group of agencies, we've gathered together some agencies, some departments, some organizations to kind of talk about the census and the importance of the census and to reach out to mainly those areas that are undercounted. And we do have some undercounted populations in our county, so we're trying to identify those and how to reach out. And I do want to introduce Ms. Alisa Shepherd, she is with the Census Bureau and she is our census partner. She's been assisting us with our group and she's been a tremendous asset in providing us education. She's actually been reaching out herself in the communities, some of you probably have seen her around at different groups and organizations. And so again, thank, I want to thank her for her participation in this. The census is very important, it's more than just the count, it's more than just saying, hey, count me. There is a reason for the census. One, of course, we all know it is mandated by law, but of course, it is important in funding. That census does determine the funding that the county receives, that local government receives, so it's important that we are counted, that we have an accurate count, so we're not short-changed, so to speak. It's also important in our fair representation in our district lines and our representation in the US House, for example, in making sure that our area is adequately represented. If we have it undercounted, then of course, we possibly lose that potential representation there. So we want to make sure we are well represented. And then finally, another one, and this is true as we saw yesterday at the announcement, it's very important for business and industry location. A lot of business and industry look at your census numbers to see if it's a growing area, where that population growth is, anywhere from your businesses that provide retail or restaurants to your larger industries. So again, we want to make sure we're not undercounted, that we do have a true reflection of our population. One subject that comes up often is the confidentiality of the census and it is mandated that that census is confidential information, it is not shared with other agencies, it is not shared with other law enforcement, it is kept confidential. So those who may be concerned that their information is shared outside and may be used against them, so to speak, that is not the case. And then I do want to mention this year, there is a difference in the census and how you will participate. There is the possibility now to participate online. So you will be getting that information in the mail to let you know that you can respond online. And if you do not respond online, there is a paper copy you can still fill out if you're, if you're comfortable with that. And also by phone, I believe you can do that as well. But the online option is now available for folks to respond to the census. And of course, the census is based on where you live April 1st, that is what's called Census Day, so that is an important date. Where you are, whether you rent, whether you are a homeowner, whether you're, you know, a college student, whatever, wherever you were at April 1st living, that is where you should fill out your census. And so if you do get that in the mail and you're not the property owner, that is yours to fill out, even if you're a renter, so that we can have that count. I do want to briefly mention the timeframes really quick. You will typically receive an invitation to respond online, that'll be received probably around the March 12th through 20th timeframe, so that is coming up fairly quickly. And then on March 16th through 24th, a reminder letter will be sent out. And in March 26th through April 3rd, there'll be a reminder postcard. And then on April 8th through 16th, if you have not responded again, you will receive another reminder letter and a paper questionnaire. And then finally, April 20th or 27th, you'll receive a final reminder postcard before you get a knock on the door from a census representative. So there'll be several reminders, several opportunities to respond. And if you do get a visit by a census employee, don't worry about it, you know, it's not a terrible thing, all they're there to do is just get the count, they're not there for any of your personal information. And that's what I want to cover now, I think this is the most important part of this conversation, this presentation, is, is people feeling safe about what they're doing and they're providing this information to the census worker. A census worker will not enter your home. If you have somebody come to your door wanting to enter, you do not have to let them in, they will have credentials, ask for that, those credentials, but they will not enter your home. They will not contact you by email. They will not threaten you with jail time for not answering a question. And then importantly here, they will not ask for your personal information, you should not, and you should not require, be required to provide a social security number, bank account information, credit card information. If you were asked that, then it is likely a fraud, do not provide that information to anyone. They will not ask for your PIN numbers, your bank account information or passwords, and they will not ask for donations of money. So it is just a simple questionnaire with questions, all they will do is ask for that information based on that questionnaire, any other information they should not ask and will not ask. So, and if someone does, you need to be concerned and you need to make sure you notify the appropriate authorities for that. But again, there's no reason to fear a census employee, they will have credentials, you can ask for that, and they will just stick to the questions that are required by the census and nothing else. Census questions are fairly simple, you should not pay anyone as well, I want to make that clear also. Somebody comes to you and wants you to pay them to answer their questions or to assist you, don't do it, because there is a potential that could be a scam as well. So again, most folks are going to have no issues with the Census Bureau, with the census employee, but if you do feel unsafe, you can ask for those credentials, you can contact the Census Bureau. And please do so before you provide any information that you're uncomfortable with. Again, I do want to mention too, finally, that Joel with Public Affairs, and I want to thank him for doing this for us, he has provided on our website, on the front page, some information on the census, where you can go there, it'll provide you information... where you can go there, it'll provide you information on, uh, the importance of the census, information, um, that you might didn't know, and some questions that you might have maybe answered there. So anyone who is interested, whether here in this room or in the public, for more information on that census, um, you can go to waynggov.com, and it's right there on the front page with some, um, so good, good info there. And so right now, I will, uh, ask Ms. Shepherd if she wants to come forward, if she has any additional information to share, or if you, as a board, might have any questions for us.
Thank you. Thank you for having given me the opportunity to speak, and I'm just gonna take, um, the broadband person lead with an ask of you guys, for everyone in this room, if you guys will help us in spreading awareness about the 2020 census. So if there's any organizations that's in this room, that's a business, schools, other professional organizations, I will ask you to contact me. I'll be waiting outside for you guys, um, to help me so you can spread awareness about the 2020 census, because it's so important. There's not a person in this room who would not benefit from an accurate count. All of us benefit from an accurate count in terms of getting the funding for our schools, roads, community programs. So again, my one ask is that you guys, please contact me, contact me, so we can help spread awareness, um, to our community on the importance of the 2020 census. Thank you.
And this is a question that I, I may know the answer, but for the public. Citizenship. Speak to the whole citizenship, uh, situation. Having to be a citizen or not having to be a citizen?
So the only criteria for you, the census is the most inclusive civic organ, um, civic, um, engagement that you will take part of in the United States, period. We do not ask the question about citizenship. It's not on there. We ask 10 questions. They're all demographic questions, your name, um, your date of birth, age, sex, how many people live in your household, and your relationship, your race, and your ethnicity. That's it.
Uh, additionally, the reason I, um, I've served District 2, that reason goes over down into Du, down to Dublin, and there's a large Hispanic and Haitian population in that area, uh, east and west of 117, of course, down into Dublin, and, uh, uh, all through the southern part of county. And my question maybe is, are there any thing said or unsaid that you can think of, or should think of, or maybe can think of, that would make this population more comfortable? I mean, i- i- it, even to a person who's been in America for 73 years like I am, questions are by nature intrusive. I mean, you know, you just don't make the habit of answering questions. And a population who at times have, um, had problems with all the other governmental agencies, and not judging right or wrong, but they're gonna be terribly, uh, hesitant.
Yes.
To answer any questions. And then, and therefore, I, I say to you, something that you could think of, or the agency could think of, that would make it a little more comfortable. And the last thing is, how widely are you recruiting folk who are bilingual in those...
So we are, so first thing, this is what I will tell everyone, period. The census really is about shaping your future. So if you are deeply invested in how your community is gonna grow, how your, how your kids', um, schools are going to be, um, funded, this is the reason for you to take the census, because it really affects every single facet of our life. And then also, I would say to those particular people is, really, you share more information on social media than you will with the census, in terms of, we're just asking you 10 questions, and those are just simple demographic questions for you to really, um, so you can get the funding back into your community, so you can grow and the community can thrive. And the second thing is, your information is safe. It's protected by Title 13. As Mr. Barry mentioned, we cannot share your data with any other agency. It's mandated. It's protected. Census data gets released every, every 72 years, and that's what goes into, you know, my, and, um, you tracking your ancestors, um, on ancestors.com. So your information is safe, and the census is vitally important to your, the future of your community. So that's what I would say to those people.
And last thing, your, your, your last name, I'm sorry.
Shepherd.
Shepherd.
Mm-hmm. And the other thing I will also say in terms of, I didn't, um, touch on the recruitment piece. Um, we are recruiting. Um, folks can go online, 2020census.gov/jobs and apply for, um, positions. We want as many people as we can. We are trying to fill at least 5,000 census takers position in the state of North Carolina. So if you're out there, if you want to come work for us, it's part-time, it's flexible positions, and they pay well. In Wayne County, it's 1450 an hour. So we are here. We are desperately looking for people to fill those positions.
Any, any other questions or comments?
Okay. Thank you. I'll be waiting for you guys outside.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next is the presentation of the East Carolina Workforce Development Board Recognition Award, uh, and Maintaining Award from ACT by Wayne Community College Business and Industry Center Executive Director Craig Fache.
It's all right. It's all right. I know I missed the last meeting, and, uh, but I brought a lot of people to make up for missing the last meeting, so. I, I, I really appreciate the time of being able to address you guys today and the public, and, um, please forgive me. I wanted, uh, I could speak about this for half an hour, but I know that your time is precious along with everybody else's, so I did create myself some notes, so I'll be looking down, reading the notes here. Um, but I did bring a lot of people, uh, most of whom I will mention, and, uh, and then, um, they'll of course come forward for the recognition also. Um, but to start off with a little bit of history, in 2007, Wayne County Commissioners approved funding for a community-based initiative to focus on unifying economic development and workforce development efforts. A collaborative group represented by employers, one of those employers I'd like to make a mention to, where is Charles Brogdon? Been here since the beginning, also a representative on the East Carolina Workforce Development Board appointed by the county commissioners. Um, he is, uh, here with us today, and, uh, we have many other employers that are on this board. But also, the county commissioners have representation, the Chamber of Commerce, Wayne County Development Alliance, North Carolina Works, uh, our NC Works Career Center, Wayne County Public Schools, and Wayne Community College. The group formed what is known as the Wayne Occupational Readiness Keys for Success Initiative, or shortened as the Works Initiative. In November of 2011, North Carolina Eastern Region launched the state's first work-ready communities demonstration project. NC Eastern Region was selected, our NC's Eastern Region was selected as a demonstration site, in part because of its home to Wayne County's Works Initiative, which served as the model for a certified work-ready community in the state of North Carolina. The purpose of a certified work-ready community initiative is to provide counties with a framework to validate that they have a skilled workforce ready to fill current and future jobs. Strategic partners in the certified work-ready community initiatives from the state level include the North Carolina Chamber, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, North Carolina Community College System, North Carolina Department of Commerce, and numerous economic and workforce development entities throughout the state. And to quote, uh, our Secretary of Commerce yesterday, workforce is the number one thing that new businesses are looking for when they come to, um, to North Carolina. A certified work-ready community is achieved by meeting established goals, uh, that we have every year. Um, and we have a, a great representative, Nicole Brown, back here in the back, who makes sure to stay on top of these goals. But part of that is also in the number of individuals that earn a National Career Readiness Certificate, along with business and recognition of recommendation and qualified, uh, these NCRC applicants in their hiring process. As of 2019, Wayne County was the fourth-largest number of NCRC credentials in the state. We used to be first for quite some time. However, there's only three counties that have surpassed us. Wake County has surpassed us by only 6,000 credentials, and they have about 10 times the population that we have, over a million people. Guilford County, they've only surpassed us by about 500. They've got about a half a million people in their population. Mecklenburg County, they've only surpassed us by about 300, and they have over a million people in the population. So Wayne County, at 20,024 credentials earned, with a population of roughly 120,000. I think that's something that we should, uh, be able to celebrate. But that's the type of data that our economic developer, Mark Pope, is using when he's talking with companies. And another little tidbit here on, uh, something that clout the Wayne County Public Schools with, the 2019 North Carolina School Report Card data showed that 72.7% of Wayne County Public Schools in 12th grade, college, and career readiness concentrators earned at least a silver NCRC certificate. I have you know that the state average is 65.5. So we are exceeding what the state is doing. To quote former, uh, existing industry manager, uh, from the WCDAs, Mike Kainey, he once said, "WCDAs uses work keys and career readiness certifications in both our recruitment and retention efforts. CRCs let employers know that prospective employees have the skills they need and are trainable on the job." In just a moment, Tammy Childers, Executive Director of the East Carolina Workforce Development Board, will come up, and she's gonna recognize, she had already recognized this back in November, however, not every entity was able to be there, and so she's gonna recognize the other partners today, and, uh, she's brought a recognition, uh, plaque that she's gonna give to you. Um, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that have been ongoing since then. Um, recently, the Works Board has been working on a strategic plan with overarching goals for local workforce development. The four goals are: building a pipeline of higher skilled workers to meet current and future business demands by trying to retain our youth; increasing access to job market for those populations that face significant barriers or challenges gaining employment to, uh, to getting a, providing a, a living wage; attracting and retaining veterans and their spouses into the civilian workforce; and lastly, driving job creation and making our community a more attractive place to work and live by supporting an economic, or entrepreneur ecosystem. In addition to that, we've received $200,000 from Duke Energy to help upskill, uh, workforce through apprenticeships. We have, uh, been awarded, and Ms. Kristi Norton is the, uh, Regional Director over here. She's Regional Director for our Coordinator for Apprenticeships in the Eastern Region. Uh, that was, uh, through a, um, application through the North Carolina Community College System that was funded by USDOL. And, uh, she's been successful in helping to create multiple apprenticeships. We're excited to announce that as of last week, uh, maybe a week before, our first youth apprenticeship program has been, uh, approved by the state, which is now gonna allow high school students to be able to get access to being able to get into some of these, uh, these employers that we've created apprenticeships with right now. So, uh, so that's gonna hopefully help that with that pipeline of keeping the youth here. And hopefully, of course, you guys are familiar with another thing I talked to you guys about most recently, Launch Goldsboro. Um, we've been, uh, very instrumental in, uh, trying to develop some entrepreneurs. We currently have 12. I'll be there with them tonight, from 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock at the college, and they are trying to open up new small businesses here in Wayne County. That's just a few of the things. There's plenty more I could talk about, but, uh, in interest of everybody's time, I'd like to bring up, uh, Tammy Childers from the East Carolina Workforce Development Board.
Good morning. It is a real pleasure to be here, and I feel like I'm among friends. Um, I've had the opportunity to work with several of you over the years, for the past 26 years, actually, Commissioner Carmody, Commissioner Pete, and Commissioner Mayo. Um, your work as a Board of Commissioners in this region has been extraordinary in the fact of providing real leadership for a county as it relates to education and workforce development. Early in the 90s, when all of our region was pretty much struggling with downturn, uh, Wayne County was taking that opportunity to look at better ways of delivering employment and training services for the citizens of the region. And you actually became our very first one-stop career center, which is now known as NC Works Career Center. That was early in 95, recognized by the state as one of the first one-stop career centers. And then even fast forward to what we're talking about today with the work-ready communities. Looking at, um, during that time, you set up a workforce development, workforce development council, and that was in the mid 90s. That was prior to the Works Initiative. Looking at, you know, how do we engage our business leaders, such as our board member, but Charles Brogdon, and many others, to come to the table, used to meet at B, BB&amp;T in their, um, boardroom, actually, and had those discussions. What can we do as business leaders to strengthen our education system? How can we be better engaged? Through those efforts, um, when you did form the Works Initiative with your workforce development partners, the leadership from the community colleges and the school systems and all of our other partners, but you looked at, you know, what can the Wayne County Board of Commissioners do? And you're the only Board of Commissioners I know of in the state, and certainly in our region, that not only talked about supporting education and workforce development, but you committed resources to make it happen. And those resources, at a time when the Eastern Region was beginning this work-ready communities initiative, really had that buy-in. And you were able to say, "We, we want this. We want to see our high school students graduating at a higher educational attainment level. We want our college students graduating at, earning their, um, degree or diplomas." And we've been able to see those results in this region. As a result, not only for Wayne County, but our entire nine counties benefited from your leadership in that all nine counties are now work-ready certified. And it's because of this group right here, and all of your partners in the back. And the county commissioners' financial contributions, um, toward this effort, and your commitment to your military, to Seymour Johnson, to the base, to the spouses, in recognizing that this credential, this national career readiness credential, would not only benefit them if they decided to stay here in North Carolina, but it was your way of saying thank you if they moved on. So you can be very proud of those accomplishments. And we honored you at our banquet in November, along with our partners, Wayne Community College, Wayne County Schools, our Economic Development, Wayne County Development Alliance, NC Works Career Centers, for your commitment, for your partnership, but more importantly, for your leadership to this region and workforce development. So it is my honor, um, we have this, um, presentation to present to the Board of Commissioners as a key partner, and to say thank you for your leadership in making this partnership a true success and model. And not only that, but at the ACT level, where the certificates are issued, um, we were asked, invited, and I have to give credit to Wayne County, because they wanted to know what is, what is the real secret to this success? How did, how did you get, you know, 70 local employers to want to support this initiative? How did you get 20,000 CRCs? And while you may be four, when you look at the percent of the population that was just talked about, you're number one, over 16% of your citizens have a career readiness certificate. So that says a lot. And also, as a result, with the governor's, uh, My Future NC Initiative right now for educational attainment, to see that goal of 400,000 more credentials by 2030, Wayne County is certainly leading the way in those efforts. And as a result, we all have benefited as our region. If you look at 2008, when we began the Career Readiness Certificate Project and the Work-Ready Communities Initiative, we've been able to see our educational attainment levels go up, and, and this region, there are more students that have graduated with their, um, degrees. So data is now speaking for itself, and you're very deserving of this recognition collectively as a group. So, thank you.
And if we can, she actually brought, uh, some, some of these, so Wayne Community College and NC Works was at the dinner, so we've already got ours, uh, but all of the other partners, uh, she brought up a, uh, a recognition, uh, plaque for, um, the county commissioners, the public schools, the, uh, Wayne County Development Alliance. Um, she, she brought those other three. And, uh, so of all the partners, we'll, yeah, everybody.
What come down?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Both.
You can't hide, ain't never that one.
Of course, I will come down.
I remember, as you brought up, when Mike Haney and the previous people were here, our work-ready certificates, even our small company, even a small business, benefited from the work-ready certificates that we did with all, that most of the population in Wayne County. It took away all the, a lot of the interviewing process. Y'all knew what we were looking for, and we were able to hire people. If I remember correctly, that the process that we used here in Wayne County to get number one for work-ready certificates was used as a model by other counties. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Which has a, really, a lot to say about where we stand with economic development and training. As you, as most of you know, I'm a training person. We've had an apprenticeship program for 42 years in our shop. Training is essential, no matter what trade you are. So I'm glad to see the recognition and the progress that's being made through workforce and the county and the community college. So thank you so much for all you do. Any other commissioners have any comments?
I have, I have to say something.
Yeah, Mr. Pace's got to say something.
Because I was in the midst of all this back in the, in the 90s, and I remember the day that Mike Haney and I spoke to the Board of Commissioners at lunch at Western Sizzlin. I don't think half of them even listened to what we had to say, but he gave us $50,000. I was shocked. I walked out of there. But, you know, Mike was, did a great job working on it, and we can't forget Diane Ivey, who's now retired, living at the coast, enjoying her life. But she made the connection with the school system to get their students to take the test, and that was a hard sell now, because a lot of teachers are, not a lot of teachers, all teachers are, because I've been married to one for almost 40 years. So we ain't got time to have another test, but we were able to convince them to do that, and it was very valuable in the long term, or we wouldn't be talking about it today. And then it spread on out to our local industries. So there were a lot of people who worked very hard behind the scenes for many years. And Tammy, I recognize a couple of guys on the back there, too, that I haven't seen in a long time. But anyway, thanks for the recognition, and Wayne County will keep pressing forward.
If I may, I forgot to mention somebody. So the accrediting agency overall of this is A C T. And to your point on the test, anytime typically we hear the fact that they're talking about having to take another test, it's a credential. And that's the way that I think that Diane had told us, is it's not just the fact that you're taking a test, you're earning a credential by your results. And so, and Michelle Horn from A C T is here, and she did want to make sure to make just a couple, a couple comments. Of course, we have always exceeded the, the time limit that, or not exceeded the time limit it took to become recertified or reaffirmed. We've always beat it and typically beat it by about a year or so. Michelle Horn, she'd like to say one thing.
I did not want to drive all the way back to Wayne County and not say good morning. I am a product of Wayne County, particularly Seven Springs. Grew up in Seven Springs, so the internet, my brother has, because he drops lots of calls. But anyway, so a student, an educator, Mr. Carmody was the C T E Director when I first started teaching at Greenwood Middle School over 20 years ago. Served as a school administrator at Spring Creek, had their first graduating class, then went on to work at D P I to work at the state level with your career development coordinators, and work in the C T E program that the Work Keys is actually a part of. So I'm excited to be here. I can tell you from A C T's perspective, when we were talking about workforce development, Wayne County is always the conversation, the topic of, topic of conversation. What are they doing there? The work that they're doing, it's a small county, but the buy-in is tremendous. And so I want to thank you for all the opportunities. Thank you for the team that has worked really hard, and probably, if I was still in the school system, I would continue to promote it. I currently work as the State Executive for North Carolina and Virginia, so we are definitely blowing the states around us out of the water. And Virginia has conversations about what can we do. They have very small pockets, but they're looking, so just know that you are definitely on the map. The other thing, I'm going to make a shameless plug for the A C T that's coming up on Tuesday. All of your juniors in the state will be taking the A C T on Tuesday, and when they take that assessment, we have a measurement there based on their composite scores as to how well they would do on the Work Keys whenever they take it as seniors. But the good thing about Wayne County, and I believe you're still doing this, all of your juniors take the Work Keys. So when it's time for seniors to take the Work Keys, it's a very small number, because these students have already passed it, made that silver level, moving on to getting more credentials. So I just want to say congratulations, and thank you for believing in the team and for the team doing all the amazing work. Thank you.
Thank you. For, for Michelle returns to her seat. Michelle, you have to forgive me, because I, I, over time, I worked with so many different people. Her hair's a little bit different.
And it's gray.
That gray, gray is in these days. But I, I, I sit here, and it's just sort of maybe putting a timeline on myself, but the two of you all, I've worked with you at different times, and when, when you said 26 years, I was sort of sitting up here trying to decide if the 26 years started with Bill, but I think the 26 years started with me. Absolutely. We date back, we date back into the Raleigh area, and, and thank you so much, Michelle, for carrying the message about Wayne County. I've always known we were number one in the workforce arena. I've always known that between the school system
Yep.
and Wayne Community College, and the eastern workforce development arena. She's carried that ball, and stand up a minute, just stand up. She's carried that ball so strong for years. Now, this initiative is very important, and I'm not going, there's one more that's working with a community college that she met with a small group, that one of these days, we're going to talk about that, but not today. So there's all kinds of things going on for the benefit of our working population that extends beyond high school. That's a part of, that's a group that I don't want us to lose track of, because everyone doesn't get everything they need by 12th grade. And there's a population out there that needs additional help. So that's a group that we want to talk about again. But Wayne Community College, thank you.
Yes, yes.
And Michelle, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, any other questions, Mr. Haney? Just, just a comment. You know, y'all been giving us a lot of praise today, and the praise is not ours. If it hadn't been for the school system and the, and the community college, and I didn't realize this until y'all pointed me to the board at the college, but the credit goes to the school system and the community college. I mean, we're getting a whole lot of credit today that we didn't do the workforce. Y'all, y'all need the credit for, for what, for what has been done.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I'm sorry. Any other comments? Okay, thank you so much for getting Mr. Haney.
I did want to say, I do apologize to Mr. Foe for messing up his name. Craig is a very difficult name, and so I do apologize for that lack of brain fart.
I'm going to be next.
Please send my apology on that.
Mr. Piano Manager, just remember, my last name is Akoc, not Edco.
And my last name is Honeycut, not Holycut. But I do apologize for that.
My last name is Mayo, not Manase.
Next on our agenda is a motion to approve Resolution 2028, a resolution honoring the accomplishments of Apostle Dr. Norbert E. Simmons. And I think Commissioner Carmody would like to read that.
Read that, Mr. Carmody.
Yes, thank you very much. Before I read the resolution, I, I just want to say a word or two about Apostle Dr. Norbert Simmons. This past weekend, I was, had an opportunity to attend two functions with the Carver Alumni Association. The first, the first one, I will speak to a little bit later on, but the second one that I went to featured Dr. Simmons and a singing group. And this group dates back to when they were in high school. Now, I only want to say, the gentleman in this group is at least my age, or maybe a little bit older, and they had started this group when they were high school students. And I think as the literature reads, there was a span of about 30 years, and then they got back together, and they did a wonderful job. And I would only want to quote the M C, Jean Whitfield, she was, at one point, she, they were having just a little bit of an intermission, and they had just finished a song, and they had a little, this was a gospel group, but they had just a little bit of a dance routine. I have to call it that, because it reminds you of some of the groups that Temptations or some of those groups had that little step. And she left, she said, "Well, I knew that step wasn't going to last long, because those legs up there were a little bit older than the..." Okay. I just had to throw that in, because I thought that was really appropriate. But let me read this, this resolution of a very distinguished gentleman. "On the accomplishments of Apostle Dr. Norbert E. Simmons. Whereas Apostle Dr. Norbert E. Simmons was born in Mount Olive, North Carolina, and now resides in Goldsboro. And whereas Dr. Simmons founded Deeper Life Church Ministries Incorporated on September 19th, 1984. And whereas Dr. Simmons ministry has transformed the lives of individuals in the greater Wayne County area and beyond. And whereas Dr. Simmons' construction of a mega ministry in Wayne County has been a reservoir of spiritual wealth and has helped propel Wayne County throughout the eastern region of North Carolina. And whereas Dr. Simmons has helped to make Wayne County a place where lives are improved on spiritual, physical, mental, socially, and financially. Whereas the congregation of Deeper Life Church Ministries and all citizens of Wayne County would like to thank Dr. Simmons for his accomplishments. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners recognizes and respectfully honors the retirement of Apostle Dr. Norman E. Simmons, and thanks him for the contribution that has made the county of Wayne and North Carolina. Adopted this 18th day of February 2020, signed by our illustrious chairperson, E. Ray Mayo, Chairperson, Wayne County Commissioners. Thanks, thank you. We would like to
Set a motion?
Make a motion.
Yeah.
Thank you. Like to make a motion to, for this resolution.
Yes, Steve. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Are there any comments? All in favor of the motion for Resolution 2028-8? Raise your right hand, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Haney.
Next, we do have public comments.
Yes. Boy, we're running late today, too. At this time, I'd like, I'd like to open the floor up for public comments. You have four minutes to speak. If you come up to the podium, give your name, address, and phone number. Does anyone wish to speak at this time?
Hello, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Sylvia Barnes, and I live at 1708 Laurel Street here in the city of Goldsboro. On tomorrow, early voting would have been open one week. We still have, I guess, about another week and a half to go, and then the big day will come on March the 3rd. You still have time. I want to encourage people to go to the polls, and please vote. If you are not registered, you can register and vote on the same day. You do not have to have any I D. to go and to vote at this time. I'm encouraging people, if you are still uncertain about the quarter percent sales tax, walk into the front door of the library, and there is a board that sits on your left-hand side. It is a colorful board, it's a beautiful board. Read that board and note for yourself what it says. It lists things in order, why we should vote for the quarter percent sales tax. It lists everybody that, all of the schools that will be, that will get money and stuff from that sales tax. It's not too late. Please go and vote. You have until next Saturday, I think it is, is, is the last day for the early voting. Then they will be closed, and the last day to vote is March the 3rd, 2020. Citizens, family, friends, do not let this day go by without us going to the polls and casting our vote. I would just like to read a statement from Representative John Lewis, that he often said this during the time when people should be voting and did vote. People keep telling me they are frustrated and ask, "What can I do?" I say, organize, get registered, and vote like you've never voted before. You must not become hostile, be hopeful, and optimistic. This is not a struggle for a day or week, but the struggle of a lifetime. You all have a blessed day, and God bless each of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chris Gurley, 169 East Wayne Road, Goldsboro, North Carolina, 919-738-9705. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak. I do agree with Ms. Sylvia, we need to support the quarter cent sales tax. I am running for District 5, County Commissioner, to replace, to return Bill Payton, and it would definitely make my job a whole lot easier if I'm sitting in that seat. Our schools need it, and based on what was, Commissioner Dougherty spoke on, I don't know, four weeks ago, that it would be dedicated to our school system for years to come. $2.6 million a year, and we hope it grows. We hope the economy keeps going strong, which I think it will. 20 years, that's 30-plus million dollars, and it takes a lot to run a school. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity, and I can't leave without saying, I am Chris Gurley, and I appreciate your vote for District 5, County Commissioner.
Anyone else wish to speak? This is public comment time. Anyone else? Okay, our public comment time is closed. Mr., well, I forgot, we skipped over the 9:15 public here, we're running an hour late on. I guess we can do it, might as well go ahead and go, stay in order. Mr. Akoc, you have an appointment?
Yes, sir, we do have some appointments this morning, some reappointments. First one, we have the reappointment of Mr. Charlie Ward, Wayne County Planning Board, and that's in form of a motion from the Appointments Committee.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any questions, comments? All in favor? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries.
Thank you. We also have a reappointment to the Commissioners Council of Older Adults. We have several here. Reappointment for Ms. Paula Edwards, Ms. Angie Boswell, Ms. Patricia Beer, Helena Bell, Ms. Terry Davis, Ethel Barnes, Brandy Doss, and Cheryl Crumpler. And that's in the form of a motion from the Appointment Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any comments from the Commissioners, question? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries.
I have one more comment. This is not a recommendation or an appointment, but we still need some, we need, I think, what, three more members on the Goldsboro Planning Commission, and we need to appoint someone, so. Each Commissioner was supposed to appoint one, and I'm one of the guilty ones that has not yet, but anyone-
No, that's on the housing.
That's the housing.
The Goldsboro Planning Commission, you just have one spot available.
Okay, okay, you're right, you're right, you're right. Sorry about that.
No, sir, that's fine.
My secretary didn't write that down. Okay, that's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. A. Cott. At this time, we want to declare a public hearing to receive public comments concerning the propositions of tax-exempt bonds to be issued by the Public Finance Authority on behalf of Wonderful Foundations. You have anything to add, Mr. Tony Cott?
This is $26 million in tax-exempt financing for Wayne Prep Academy, which is out on Tommy's Road. Again, these are tax-exempt, but they are not a liability for the county. This is a process that we have to go through, and the bonding agency has to go through to issue those bonds.
Ms. Caroline Sink is here to answer any questions you have.
Yes.
Commissioners, I was here in November. Thank you again for having us back and holding another public hearing. Wonderful Foundations has, after talking with Wayne Prep, agreed to open up the possibility of expanding that school for high school students to be able to grow the facility. And so we needed to have an additional public hearing and a slightly modified resolution from what this group adopted in November. And as the manager said, this is a requirement. Of course, we want the public to have an opportunity to speak about this. It's not a liability, not an obligation of the county or the state of North Carolina at all, but this is a requirement under federal law to provide Wayne County citizens an opportunity to make a statement about these, these bonds, tax-exempt bonds. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Have any, any question? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Dougherty. Well, you opened up Pandora's Box there. So I tell you that they are going to expand to accept high schools?
They would like to do so, yes.
They would like to do so?
They would like to do so, yes.
And if so, can you tell me approximately how many students that would incorporate?
Mr. Dougherty, I'm sorry, I don't know that. And Glenn Barfield, who represents, is the lawyer-
Right.
-for them, had a hearing, court hearing in another area today.
Sure, sure.
So couldn't be here. I spoke with him, and I understand that the school is certainly in favor of this. They are running out of room to accommodate the existing classes that they have to, to go up.
Well, we certainly would be-
Continue to matriculate, yeah.
We certainly would be interested in hearing their, their plans of expansion.
Right, right, I'm sorry.
So hopefully in the future, we could get that.
Yeah, yes, sir.
And then, Mr. County Manager, once this public hearing is resolved, if this, if we decided to go favorably, are we to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Ma'am.
This is a charter school or a private school?
It is a charter school. It's a public charter school.
It's a public charter school. And the students that, of course, you're selecting, some of those will come from the Wayne County High Schools?
Potentially, yes, that's-
Well, potentially, I mean, and we would expect that some of them would. And is it true that once those students come there, the money will follow them?
There isn't any school district from which a student comes?
Well, with just Wayne County?
Yes, Wayne County, yes.
So there will be, if there were 100 students out of Wayne County, and somebody might have to help me, but every student curious, how many dollars would fill?
I do not know, Mr. Cromarty, but that is, you're accurate. There is an allocation, the state law requires, that the school district pay a certain dollar amount for each student who goes to a public charter school. That's correct. It is, I understand considerably, less than what is allocated for the student in the public, in the high school, but it is, so you're right-
So it's not a dollar for dollar?
It is not, no, sir. But it, but you are correct that a portion of the budget of the Wayne County Board of Education, part of that would be moved to the charter school should a student from the Wayne Public Schools choose to go to this charter school.
And if the student at that charter school should return back to the public school before that year is over, does the dollars revert back to the school?
I think there is a cutoff date when those, just like there is for the public schools, that, you know, there's a certain date that those, that head count is made, and once the head count is final, the dollars stay there. It would be reallocated the following year. I do, my understanding is there's not an opportunity to sort of shuffle the deck a little bit and change that allocation later in the year. But I'm a, more of a bond lawyer, sir, than a, than a charter school expert on that.
Well, ma'am, just-
Certainly.
The reason I would ask those questions, those questions are often asked of us, and especially in the time of tight dollars and dollars that need to be spent at the public high schools and how far they are behind-
Right.
-in terms of funding, overall, we do our part, but the state is less giving than this local board is, comparatively speaking. And therefore, any dollars that would leave, along with the students who may decide to go to your charter school, it's going to take something away from the remaining of the students who are at that school to be funded on the dollars that's left. So I just think the public should, should reflect on that.
And of course, the student will not be there either, so, I mean, there's, there are fewer students that would be in the high school or the middle school.
That's true. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Okay, this, this is, this is a public hearing. So if anyone wishes to speak at the public hearing, anyone wish to speak? Okay, at this time, I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dougherty.
I make a motion that we approve. How would I address this particular motion, Mr. Counsel?
You concur, and you have had this hearing, and that you concur, you approve the issuance of the bonds.
I so move, Mr. Chairman, as he stated.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions or comments?
I do have one question, Counsel. Are we the only body that has to approve this? I mean, they don't go to the school board, do they?
They don't go to the school. To the, to the primary group that runs the county, and you are it.
Okay, I was just curious.
Sometime, if the school had been in the city of Goldsboro, they could have gone to the city of Goldsboro, but it's not in the city.
One last question, Mr. Dougherty. Attorney. All, all charter schools that have asked for bonds to be issued have come through the County Board of Commissions to, to get this approval designation, however we are.
Depends on what kind of bonds they are. And- The federal law requires, come before the governing body where the school is located, for these particular bonds.
And so regardless of what happens, the citizens of Wayne County will not be obligated for any of that bond dollars.
Not one bit, not one bit, and your resolution will say that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. A. Cott.
I've got a question, and I don't know whether anyone can answer it or not, and it really doesn't pertain to the, to the bond. With the increasing in the charter schools that we're seeing, has anyone looked, is that relieving any tension off of the public school system far as the class size mandate? I mean, is it, I mean, if, if, if 20 students is going to a charter school and they're not going to the public school, has it relieved any of the tension?
The action that, that they're asking you to take today will not, because what they're talking about here is possibly expanding to a high school.
To a high school, okay.
So they've, what they have done already with the elementary school will have-
Will have, will have, okay, okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, might say that the states have to approve all charter schools. You can't just have one that you want.
Right. Okay, any other comments from? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the tax-exempt bonds on behalf of Wonderful Foundations. Everyone in favor, would you raise your right hand, please? All opposed? We have one opposed, okay. Did you say one opposed?
I voted for the rest of them.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You did, you did it after I said it, so, okay, we're unanimous. Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Next is the consent agenda. We did have two walk-on budget amendments, number 344 and number 342, and we would like to add that to the consent agenda for proof.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or concerns from Commissioners? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have just a couple of updates that I did want to mention. Number one is our sales tax meetings, and our sales tax meetings are going well. Commissioner Acock, last night, attended the Wayne County Mobile Home Association meeting. That went well. Every meeting that we've been to has been received very, very positively throughout the community. We do have one more municipality that we need to attend, and that's tonight at 7:00 PM, and that is Seven Springs. And again, every board so far has voted unanimously in support of the sales tax initiative. The other we have this week, Carl Best Luncheon is held Wednesday at noon at the Maxwell Center, and we'll make a presentation there. And then also, the Wayne County Board of Realtors will be meeting on Thursday at noon at Lane Tree. So if you would like to go, just let me know. I think the chairman is going, and I think a couple of representatives from the school board. So if you'd like to go, though, let me know, we'll make sure you have lunch there. Did want to remind our Facilities Committee that we do have a meeting today at 2:00 PM after lunch today, and we'll meet with the DSS Board to discuss the floor plan for the proposed renovation at Dixie Trail. So that's today at 2:00 PM. Wanted to remind you that the Chamber Annual Banquet is also this week, at Thursday at 6:00 PM at Walnut Creek. Also, I wanted to mention to you, when Mr. Winrich was talking about open broadband and the tower in Grantham, we are working with him now. Part of what we are requiring, though, is that there's an engineering study being done on the tower to make sure that the equipment is not going to interfere with anything that we have going on. So, once that engineering study has been completed, hopefully we'll be able to get that equipment on that tower, so.
How long are we anticipating the delay?
There's been some concern about pay, you know, who's responsible for the engineering requirement. We're saying that it is open broadband's responsibility.
That's what I was going to ask you. So the study has not been ordered as yet because y'all are arguing about who's going to pay for it?
We, we paid for, we paid for another one that-
I understand.
And we're, we just want to make sure that the pay is there.
And the cost of that study is?
Four thousand.
It's expensive.
It's four thousand, so.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
While we're talking about the towers and studies now, the other three new towers that the county is putting up, would they be suitable for possibly using? So they're, they're being-
Yes, sir.
They're being built stout enough that, that, so that's another one, Seven Springs, and two in the northern end.
Yes, sir.
That's great, that's great. Would each one of those also require a $4,000 engineering study?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, even, even though they're new towers, if they're new towers.
Any idea of whether that grant dollars could pay for any of that?
I might back up on that. I think we're working, they're working with the engineer to design for it. The windload is designed properly for their equipment, so.
What?
Right.
Well, I agree, anyway, you could incorporate that on the front end would be, because we know we want them up there.
And I, I appreciate you mentioning that.
I just asked my same question again, would that grant could possibly pay for those engineering studies?
Not-
Because I think that's the real hold of.
Yeah.
You don't know.
Yeah, yeah, not sure on that. But, but we'll make sure that, we'll have a letter ready for the chairman to sign and send off tomorrow in support of that grant. But also, wanted to remind you that the Board of Commissioners have canceled our next meeting, which is March 3rd, and that is primary day. So our next meeting after today will be on March 17th. So, and that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager. Mr. Cromarty, are you ready?
As soon as I stop this thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayo. I would only like to add just a couple of items to this past weekend. It turned out to be a rather long weekend, but a very pleasant one. This February, of course, is Black History Month, and I had an opportunity to be involved in a couple of observances. The first of two that I spoke about was the Carver Culture Center in Mount Olive. Beautiful place to have meetings, and it's always very enjoyable because folk go to great lengths to make sure we have a good speaker. This last past weekend, we were able to listen to a young lady named Erica Smith, and she happens to be running for the United States Senate seat that's currently held by Mr. Tillis. And interesting, one of the interesting things about, as she closed her comments, and I thought this was just like, her name is Erica, and you cannot spell America without having Erica in it. I just thought I would throw that out because sometimes it's just a buzzword that people will remember about someone. The second thing that I had an opportunity to go to was church that my, our former colleague, J.D. Evans, was a mem, is a member of, but is a past member. They had a function Sunday afternoon that included, of course, a sermon, but also, I think, as they described, was an old-timey meal. So you can about imagine there was some delicious food there. But throughout this month, there'll be a lot of observances speaking specifically to contributions of Afro-Americans. And I won't, and I did not bring the list of things that were invented by Afro-Americans, but streetlights and all the things that adds to safety and comfort in America has often been invented by Afro-Americans. And the baby stroller and some other list of things that I like to bring attention to, the ironing board. A lot of those things had to do with servitude, serving someone. And I like to bring out the fact that probably the stroller was invented because oftentimes people had to carry somebody else's child, so it's better to have them on a stroller than have to carry them in your arms. I just thought I would throw that little one in. But this is a very important month, and I encourage all of you to attend and observe- But this is a very important month and I encourage all of you to attend an observance if you can, just Google that and spend a little bit of time reading about it. Thank you.
Mr. Page?
I want to thank you, Ms. Barnes, for your words today in support of the quarter cent sales tax. It's crucial to funding for our schools. We don't have a budget, state budget, and if we're to move forward, we've got to have this, this is very important. And the other part that you mentioned is also so important, and my wife and I exercised our right to vote on Friday and we were the only ones in there, so a lot of people are not getting out, so I'm encouraging the public to get out and vote. And as far as I can tell, our apps work here in North Carolina, so I think your vote will be counted, so please get out and vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Mayo?
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, every time I have a committee meeting, I have a doctor's appointment, so I don't have an appointment today.
We understand. Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Ms. Hinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Been busy two weeks since we last met. I did attend the chair meeting along with the chairman. Got a lot of good information out of it. I think the biggest thing though was yesterday's announcement out of the landed casualty. That's a win-win for Wayne County for the amount of money that they're going to invest and the number of jobs it's going to create. But I was thinking yesterday while we were out there, I was looking at Bobby and one of his sons and some of his other family members there. That family, they started out with, unfortunately, might say nothing. I mean, it was just a dream of Bobby's dad and look what it has grown into today. So that tells us that, you know, if you've got a dream, go for it. Because that's a success story right here in Wayne County that a lot of people don't realize. I mean, the size of that business now and where it started out with just three people investing in it and the strictly family taking it and moving forward with it, that says a lot for Wayne County. And there's other businesses been done the same way. I mean, Mr. Mayo started with just himself and other businesses. Mr. Daugherty, I mean, you started out, I mean, really, I mean, if you set your goal, you can do what you want to. And also, like Mr. Hinkett said, we met with the Mobile Home Association last night, a small group, but they touched a lot of people because they, you know, there were some pretty big mobile home park owners there last night. Craig did a fantastic job in presenting it to them and they asked some pretty stout questions, but you did good answering them. And also, I'd like to encourage everyone to get out and vote. I'm not going to tell you who to vote for, what to vote for. I don't think it'd be right sitting in this position, but like I said before, we said the pledge, you go back 200 years, look at the number of men and women that has sacrificed their life for us to have the privilege to go to the polls and vote. You know, someone I support may not win or someone you support may not win, but the main thing is that we've got the right to go to the polls and choose the leaders of our county, our state and our nation, and we all need to exercise that. Thank you.
Mr. Daugherty?
I, along with some of my fellow commissioners, have been out at early voting sites and, you know, it's good to actually meet and shake the hands of our citizens and get their input. And some of the input that I'm getting as I'm out there talking with our voters is that they are, like me, very anxious to see Wayne County moving forward. But in that process, I think myself included, I'm somewhat frustrated, it takes so long to get things done. It does. I remember seven years ago when I came on this board and we looked and saw where we were at on economic development. And now I look today to see that we have announcements like we had yesterday. That company was about to leave Wayne County. They had every opportunity to leave Wayne County. They were owned by an organization that's not from Wayne County and as such, our economic development team went to work and working with them, we not only retained those jobs that are here in Wayne County, but we're also adding, I think it was approximately 85 new jobs. And these are good paying jobs, I mean, in the $50,000 to $60,000 range. So that's what we need in Wayne County, not only to attract new industry, but also hold on to what we have and let them expand here. We look around and we see that our industrial park at Park East has got now a new shell building. Man, it looks nice to, I mean, it's got those ceilings that I believe are 35 foot high and it's ready for a new industry to come here. And it can be expanded from 50,000 square feet up to 100,000 square feet. We look at the new Goldsboro Industrial Campus, that is just about to take hold, we're about to see some development there, the streets and the water and the sewer going in there and the vision that WCDAs and Mark Pope has to actually bring an incubator here in Wayne County so we can grow our own, grow our own industry. And so those companies that need desperately to have manufacturing facilities but don't have $2 to $5 million to go out and build a new structure, they can lease this. So we've got a lot of things going on now, but it's taken a long time to get here. Hopefully we'll continue our vision and our planning so that those things coming three and five years down the road are going to be, those plans will be outlayed. So Mr. Chairman and I, our citizens are very pleased with what this board has done over the last few years and I hope that we'll be able to continue that progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Crumarty.
I would like to thank you and those just for a moment because Mr. Daugherty maybe opened up something that needs to be added on to. Our clerk, Ms. Bowden, prepared at our request, maybe initiated by one of a list of things that has been accomplished since 2000. Now, we were not on this board in 2000, but it's worthy to talk about, and I know Mr. Daugherty, you say things move slowly, but great, the great wheel of time turns a little slow, but it's permanent. It's permanent things that's come out of there. Looking back over that list, you see things like the senior citizens building. That serves Wayne County, Goldsboro, but when you're down there, there are some people coming from a little bit further distances away to utilize that place, to utilize that place. This county commission board has cooperated with the city to put in a soccer field that is second to none, renovated the Goldsboro Country Club into the event center, put that Maxwell Center out there so that every citizen could use it. And let me tell you what is important about that Maxwell Center. When the concept first got discussed right on this board, I asked a question, how would the average citizen be able to use it and who would be included or excluded? And this is the reason, in this community, before that Maxwell Center was put out there, a segment of our population sort of had to go to some of those older, more established buildings that someone else owned privately. But that building out there is a public building and the gentleman that was here, your minister, you talked about them utilizing that building because they had a larger population that could have been accommodated at their church. But when you go back and ask the question, who uses that building? A lot of religious entities, church businesses, family reunions, alumni from some of the universities, especially some of the Afro-Americans, there's another term we use, but those alumni have had access to that building. That's very important. And then let's move to safety. Four new EMS stations in this last year, which improved the response time. Now, I was at a meeting in Mount Olive about five or six years ago and there was a heated discussion about that response time. Anytime you add four more EMS stations to what we already had, then that, they could legitimately say that the response time is better. Now, that might not mean much to a real young person, but when your hair turns a little bit white, you want that response time to be as quick as possible because you ain't going to have a lot of time. So we want that truck to get there quick, but I said solid judgment, you got to know, four new EMS stations is very important. And Mount Olive has a new one and the Northwest has a new one and my colleague over here, when we were over here sitting next to each other, when that subject came up, said we got to have something near to where we are because we are in the outstretched region. That's like getting that broadband, so we had to watch for that. But when you take into consideration those things, and I'm going to conclude with this one, the schools. Every school in this county has received something over the last 20 years. And if not every school, every neighborhood has, every neighborhood has, whether, and probably I could go out on a limb and say every school. But there has been renovations at Brogdon Middle and extensive renovation. My wife was principal there and I think about the year she retired, a lot of extensive renovations took place and that is a beautiful campus and needs more done to it. But CBA Cock, I think, got a new cafeteria and some new classrooms. All the schools have been improved. And this last one that we're talking about with the new school up north, but right here in the center part of the county, Goldsboro High School, as I understand, is going to get a new heat slash system for air conditioning, the boiler and all that stuff, all that, all those things, new windows. All the schools are going to get something. Now, every school in every section of the county get out of this particular one, but you got to look back over time and say, hey, everyone has been improved and will continue to be improved. It's just fair to say those things because out there, involving something in these last three or four days that most of us hadn't involved, then listening to the public and they asking you questions. You need to have that, and I have it in my pocket, that list of five or six pages that Ms. Bowden prepared for us, if there's any questions about what this board of commissioners have done over the last 20 years, you need to pull that sheet out. I'll stop. But we need to pull the sheet out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I forgot one thing.
Yeah, yeah. The Firefighters Association meeting is tonight at Paitown at 7:00, so I will not be able to go with you to Seven Springs. But just, it's at Paitown tonight at 7:00. Thank you.
I'll be able to go to Seven Springs tonight, so.
Mr. Crumarty, I was going to remind you, you went way past your four minutes.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just kidding.
I was borrowing some of Mr. Pace's minutes. He's not rerunning this time, so.
I'm sure it took more.
I just borrowed some of his minutes.
You're doing something great, you had me fired up.
Well, the thing about it is, these things need to be said because over time, people's memories will dull just a little bit and they begin to think, well, we ain't had nothing lately. Well, I tell you what, I'm sorry.
Poor manager of mine.
I didn't mean to get started.
Okay, all right. I just have a few things. Most of what I've attended has already been said, just a couple of things. Ms. Barnes, thank you for coming today and making your comments. That means a lot to the quarter cent sales tax and to the children of Wayne County. Thank you for coming. I did attend the WCDAs retreat this past week, which was very informative and Commissioner Daugherty being previously on the WCDAs board is really up to date as you can see on the projects that's going on. And so, by the way, I want to tell you how much I appreciate your service on the WCDAs board. I'm on it now, but I'm probably going to be asking you a lot of questions, okay? Say thank you. Yesterday was a huge event for Wayne County and it was an honor to participate in a homegrown business that, yeah, they had to work hard, but you know what? That is a success story of living in the United States of America. We still have that opportunity if we're willing to do that. Yeah, Commissioner Acock is exactly right. When you start a business and you're not self-funded to start a business, you have to do it the hard way. And yes, when I started my small business, I started in my garage. And so with the help of Wayne County, I was able to stay here, I still am here and been blessed. Finally, the quarter, well, not finally, I got two more, but the quarter cent sales tax is so important. We've been to every corner of the county. It's been an honor for me is to represent on multiple occasions the tax presentation for quarter cent and represent the county and the board of commissioners. And of course, the county manager and I, as they always say, and is we ain't done yet, we got some more to do. Finally, I did want to acknowledge and thank East Carolina for this plaque today. And what I wanted to do is between Mr. Pace and I, since he was instrumental also, I want to read this. It says, outstanding achievement in workforce development, honoring Wayne County Works Partnership, Wayne Community College, Wayne County Public School, Wayne County Board of Commissioners, Wayne County Development Alliance and Wayne County NC Works Career Center in recognition of their outstanding achievement as a certified work-ready community resulting in over 20,000 career readiness certificates for the citizens of Wayne County. Thank you so much for that. That means a lot. But as already been said, we were just, the commissioner was just one little part of that ingredient. There's a whole lot of people came together to make all this happen, so again, thank you for that presentation. All right, any other comments? Mr. Parker, we have to go back in closed session?
Yes, sir, to discuss matters relating to the expansion of businesses in Wayne County and to consult with your attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege.
A motion to go in a closed session. Okay, you got five of them, Carl, pick one, pick everyone you want.